I do. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Nashville Town Council on this May the 11th to order. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we invite you into this meeting tonight to give us your wisdom and your knowledge to make decisions that are best for the citizens of Nashville. Amen. Tonight's meeting is an evidentiary meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the applicant, experts in their field, and persons of standing to present evidence to the town council on why or why not a special use permit for residential planned unit development should or should not be approved for the Birchwood Preserve. An example of an expert is a civil engineer trained and knowledgeable in design, placement, and capacity of public infrastructure such as water, sewer, storm sewer, streets, electric, natural gas, and telecommunications for specific types of development. And our expert is also a licensed real estate appraiser who has conducted appraisals of similar developments and can demonstrate their impact on the market value of surrounding and nearby properties. Because of the evidentiary requirements of North Carolina General Statute 160A-388E2, only persons who are or represent the applicant, an expert in their field, and are a person of standing with factual evidence will be allowed to speak at tonight's meeting. I will ask every person step into the microphone before they speak what factual evidence they have to present to the council. If there is no factual evidence, you will not be allowed to speak. This is the law for quasi judicial decisions in the state of North Carolina. Tonight, it is a quasi judicial hearing. SU 2021-02 requested by RBD Investments Incorporated for a special use permit to allow residential planned unit development to be developed off Birchwood Drive to former Birchwood Golf Course, plus or minus 110 acres. R10 medium density residential zoning district, Nash County parcel ID number 3800 0906 8689 in the town of Nashville per Division 4 of the Nashville zoning ordinance. At this time, I will turn it over to Sherri Moss, the Planning and Development Director.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just in regards with the planned unit development, the purpose of a residential planned unit development is to provide desirable open space, tree cover, recreation areas, scenic vistas, and a variety in residential properties by allowing certain lot variations so as long as the overall density of the dwelling units is no greater than that permitted by any applicable zoning requirements. The R10 medium density zoning district allows approximately four dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing 3.5 dwelling acres, units per acre. The first phase of the proposed residential planned unit development is to construct both townhomes and duplexes. These uses are allowed in the R10 zoning district as a special use permit. Special use regulations for planned unit development, townhomes, and duplexes are included in the agenda packet that you have before you. Section 18-116, Regulations for Special Uses with Regards to Planned Unit Developments. So this special use permit has to have approval by town council. The special use districts for planned unit developments can be located in the A1 agricultural, residential R30, residential R15, residential R10, multifamily MF, and the OI office institutional. In this case, planned unit developments are allowed in the R10 by special use permit. The setbacks in the R10 zoning district are as follows. The width is 80 feet, front setbacks 30, side setbacks 12, rear setback 30, height 35. And as a minimum requirement of the acreage that's allowed for planned unit development, there is a minimum of five acres that's required to develop a residential planned unit development. In this case, the subject property is 110 acres. As far as the minimum lot requirements, minimum lot sizes, lot widths, and yard setbacks may be reduced except as specified in this subsection. But in no case shall these minimum lot requirements be less than 50% of the minimum lot requirements for the district. So in the R10 zoning district, the minimum lot size requirement is 10,000 square feet. The minimum lot sizes for the proposed single-family dwellings will not decrease and will meet the lot size requirement for the R10 zoning district. The open space that's listed on your site plan is approximately 35 acres of the 110-acre site, which is approximately 1,524,600 square feet. So in regards to townhomes, meaning townhomes will be owner-occupied where the ownership of the land beneath each unit runs with that unit, and is individually owned lands on which they rest and do not meet conventional lot requirements for street frontage and yard sizes, and where walls between the units are constructed in accordance with state building requirements. And also with regards to open space, the open space is defined as common area that shall be preserved, maintained, and improved by the development owner for recreational use by residents of the development. And with regards to open space, again, there's 35 acres of open space that has been allotted by the developer, and also sidewalks are provided for access along the rightway to open areas. Also, in regards to open space ownership, our ordinance states the title to the open space area shall be conveyed to homeowners or property owners association for management, to a local government for preservation as a park or open space, to a conservation organization or place in a permanent conservation or farmland preservation easement. At that time, at the time when the open space is conveyed, a maintenance agreement shall be filed with the county registered deeds unless a local government is to be the owner of the open space. And as cited on the site plan, all open space indicates that the planned unit development, the open space of a planned unit development will be owned and maintained by the homeowners' association. And also moving down to G of the planned unit development regulations for periphery lots, where the proposed planned unit development is adjacent to an existing recorded non-planned unit development or nonclustered detached single-family subdivision, one row of standard lots will be required along the perimeter of the planned unit development unless an open space landscape buffer is provided between the planned unit development lots and the adjacent subdivision. Such open space landscape buffer would be required to be equal or greater in width than the yard setback that would be required for a standard lot in that zoning district. In this case, as shown on your plan, the developer has allotted a 50-foot buffer with showing a 25-foot reserve buffer. And so with that, that will be the landscape buffer. And parking and loading, so parking is also shown on your site plan, and it meets the requirements of two parking spaces for each unit. And also with the planned, planned unit development, so the plans are required to be labeled as a planned unit development, which it shows, and it also must show the topography, which is shown on the plan with contour intervals of greater than two, no greater than two feet. You also have structures, proposed structures that's shown on there showing as single, proposed lots showing for proposed single-family homes, townhomes, and duplexes. And also you have sizes that are shown for townhomes and duplexes. So the zoning and land use, the zoning is R10, and the proposed land use of the site and existing land use of the adjacent properties is all residential. As far as easements and rightaways, easement and rightaways are shown on the plan with Club Drive extending all the way down to Trune Court. And within the townhomes and duplexes, you have parking lots. And as well as circulation within this planned unit development, you have access and egress on Club Drive and Trune Court. The timing or the schedule of development, the first phase is proposed to be townhomes and duplexes. And moving further along, the open space and buffer errors, they are delineated on the plan. And other requirements, sidewalk must be provided on a minimum of one side of every proposed street, and that is also shown on the plan. And with regards to proposed sidewalks or trash facilities, this planned unit development will have rollout containers.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have the applicant's presentation.
And Mayor, maybe we could have everybody stand that's going to give testimony this evening at this time, swear everybody in at one time?
Okay. If you're here to give factual information, please come and I'll swear you in at this time.
Mayor, why don't you, why don't you call the names out more, they were listening to speak?
Well, it's just mine because Barbara and Pete said they did not have factual information, so he's the only one. Do you affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike Stocks. I am the owner and president of Stocks Engineering. I'm located here in Nashville. I have a bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University in 1988. I'm licensed in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia. My North Carolina license is NC 19843, and I would like for the council and the council's attorney to acknowledge me as an expert in the field of land development and civil engineering.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to start. The owner was listening to Mrs. Moss's presentation, and he clarified one thing to me. I believe Sherri, you said that Phase One would be the duplexes and the townhomes, and that is, that is not correct. Phase One would be just the development, the single-family. It has not been determined that it would be the duplexes or the townhomes. Mayor, members of the council, the town staff has done an excellent job of presenting you the development that we have here before you tonight. It is 110 acres plus minus. It is currently zoned R10. We are looking at development, developing it in a series of single-family detached, single-family attached dwelling units. The attached dwelling units would be a minimum of two units, a maximum of six. The single-family development would be single-family. All of these uses are allowed in the existing R10 development, and I would like to just reiterate or state for the first time, there is no multifamily component of this development at all, none at all. So it's not allowed in a R10, and it's not being proposed. There are four statements of findings we need to conclude tonight, and I would like to just hit a couple of those briefly and conclude my presentation, and then turn it over for questions of members of the public or the town board, as the mayor sees. Will the use materially endanger the public health and safety locating the proposed development according to the plans submitted and approved? It is my professional opinion that the development of this property will not endanger the public health and safety of the proposed developed area. The residential projects of more than 200 dwelling units are required to have two points of ingress and egress. This development will have two points of ingress and egress, which once you leave the development, it turns into five points of ingress and egress. And the, based on the review of the NCDOT, traffic generated for this development does not appear to warrant any additional improvements other than the roundabout that is currently proposed where the current triangle or shaped road configuration is now. So there will be an improvement of that intersection with a circulating roundabout. It was discussed in the TRC meeting with the DOT, and they believe that the plan as shown meets that criteria and will maneuver safely. Number two, as the town staff reported in their presentation, the proposed development meets or exceeds all the requirements of a planned unit development found in the adopted Town of Nashville zoning ordinance, and the plan meets those requirements. Number three, the use will not substantially injure or value any of the adjacent property or use of the public necessity. Studies have basically shown that home values are more a function of supply and demand and not a function of adjacent or non-adjacent areas that are developed. There are plenty of studies that show that, and what I would like to do is give you one or submit it to the town staff, which talks about housing developments and the effects of them on adjacent properties. I don't know, I just brought one for staff to do that, but I don't know if there's enough for everybody, Randy. I would like to take one excerpt from that thing that says, "The effects of new development on property values has been studied for a long time. The general consensus is that the value of existing homes has no less to do with whether a new development is being built, but more based on the economies of the supply and demand. A home's value is in direct correlation between the demand and the specific type of housing and supply in that given area. Therefore, if the demand of the homes is high, the value goes up, and if the man of the home is low, the supply, the value will go down. The development has every incentive to keep these prices of these homes of the neighborhood to, excuse me. The developer has every incentive to keep the prices of these homes and the homes in the existing neighborhood as high as possible for as long as possible." The article I just handed to some of you, I apologize for not having one for everyone, states that numerous studies have been conducted examining the impacts of housing, affordable housing and property values and a wide variety of circumstances. Fortunately, several researchers have surveyed the landscape inventory and taken critical look at the body of work and has accumulated over the past several decades. The policy briefly distills the conclusions for these literature surveys, two provided by civic groups and two by academia. The vast majority of the studies have found that affordable housing does not depress neighbor's property's values or even raise or lower them in any cases. The overall research suggests that neighborhoods such as the, have little fear of the type of attractive modestly sized developments and constitute the bulk of newly produced affordable housing today. Now, when I'm using the word affordable housing, I'm talking about market value housing, the houses that we would buy on the street, that they're not subsidized, they're not tax credit, they are consumer-built, single-family, attached, detached homes, they are not tax credit, they're not multifamily, and they are not any sectioned housing in any way. Number four, the location and character and the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted, is approved in harmony with the area and is located in general conformity with the plan of the development of the town. This property is currently located within an existing R10 zone community and is subject to the R10 zoning medium density. Medium density allows, as town noted, four dwelling units per acre. This development is proposed to have 3.5 acres, I mean 3.5 dwelling units per acre with approximately 35 acres of the 110 acres in open space. That open space will consist of dog park, open area, stormwater ponds, mail kiosk, and passive recreational areas. There, the existing neighborhood and residential proposed is consistent with the surrounding areas. There is a perimeter buffer around the entire site, and is in our opinion, the proposed development is in harmony with the neighborhood. The other three things I would like to note, other than the four facts of finding, is that our client is proposing, oh, and I think Sherri said this as well, that the residential single-family attached and detached townhomes will be individually owned and not allowed or not be for non, or not be for rent or for investors to purchase. I believe that is, I'd like to conclude my presentation, and then I can circle back and answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Thank you. At this time, in order to keep order, why don't we go around in an orderly manner, if you have a question, Kate of him, ask it, and then Louise, that way.
I have about 18 questions.
Okay, let's do one at a time, please. Let's do one at a time, please.
I'd like to start with the density, because it's been mentioned that in an R10, that you can have a maximum of four units per acre. However, on this map, it shows that this is watershed property down here, which has a maximum of two dwelling units per acre. So how is that in compliance?
The, the R10 development allows for 10,000 square foot lots. So when you're doing the overall density of the site, you can take the acre, which is 4,356 square feet, divided by 10, that's where the four comes from. So the R10 zoning is consistent with about four dwelling units per acre. So when you take the open space and apply that to areas that are within the watershed, that density is closer to that two units per acre, and the overall density is around 3.85 per acre.
But in this watershed district itself, because that's what our watershed district portion states, it says that it shall not exceed a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. So in that watershed district, not taking into account the entire portion to be developed, are we in compliance?
Yeah, I believe we are, because if you read that section a little deeper, it says, it talks about a maximum impervious area of 24% or 36%, and that overall impervious will not be, will be within that criteria.
So in the watershed district, what is the impervious percent?
36% for strip paved streets, 24% for curb and gutter streets.
What was that for curb and gutter?
24% for curb and gutter.
So, right, so 24% for curb and gutter, this is a curb and gutter?
It is, it is not.
It's not.
It is, it is, your ordinance allows for it to be strip paved like the existing streets in Birchwood, and it is proposed to be shoulder sectioned streets and all the residential, and then no streets and driveways in the townhome and two-family.
Okay, so 36% is the number that we're working with?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, in this watershed district, though, what is, let's see. Sorry. Okay. What is the hard surface or impervious cover for this watershed area? Because the way you come up with your percentage for each piece of land, divide the amount or area of impervious surface, structures, roads, parking lots, located on that question site, and then multiply it and get your fraction that way. So what is it in this, in the section?
That will, that has not been determined. It will not meet the ordinance's maximum 36% if shoulder sectioned streets are allowed, or 24% if curb and gutter is incorporated. So it hasn't been determined. It's, it's not required to be determined at this stage. That's reviewed under the construction plat review process, and it would be done through that technical review of staff at that time.
Okay. My second question, and I'll then allow it to move on, and I'll circle back to my 16 other questions. So, under our planned unit development section, minimum lot requirements, minimum lot size, lot width, and yard setbacks may be reduced except as specified in this subsection, but in no case, so it doesn't say in no case except for, it says in no case shall these minimum lot requirements be less than 50% of the minimum lot requirements for the district. We all agree that this is an R10, so the minimum lot requirements are 10,000. So how are we getting to lots of 1,100 and still being in compliance?
Okay, so townhomes do not, are not lots. You only own the land that is underneath the townhome itself. All space around that is common and open space area. So there are no lot sizes, minimum or maximum for townhomes, there are no setbacks, front setbacks, rear setbacks. It is all just the borders of the walls of the house is the land under it. So that does not apply to townhomes, which are two-family up to six. All the single-family meet that criteria.
What about the duplexes?
The duplexes are two-family townhomes. The ordinance states that the townhome is two, minimum two, up to a maximum of six. So those are just two-family townhomes with extra, with extra open space on each side of them.
So there's no actual conveyance of a lot on, on any of these duplex or townhomes?
There, there are conveyance of a lot. It's the structure the house sits on, what's under the house is the part of land that's conveyed.
So I guess that's where my problem sits, where it says, but in no case shall these minimum lot requirements be less than 50%.
For a single-family detached?
It doesn't say that.
Well, okay, what does the ordinance say as what a townhome is?
It doesn't specify, but the townhome section says that the PUD requirements apply.
Sherri, I'm not that familiar with the ordinance, how it addresses that. I do know that the townhomes are subject to the lot restriction criteria.
So it says townhouse development means a development of one or more structures containing a total of two or more units intended for owner occupancy, where ownership of the land beneath each unit runs with that unit, where units and the individually owned lands on which they rest do not meet conventional lot requirements for street frontage and yard sizes and where walls between For street frontage and yard sizes and where walls between units are constructed in accordance with the state building code requirements. All such projects shall conform to the density requirements of the district in which the development is located and shall be approved in accordance with provisions of Division Four of this article.
Sherri, could you speak louder, they can't hear you in the back. Thank you.
Page twenty-six, I'm reading from page twenty-six in your packet.
One second.
Do I need eighteen, uh, thirty-five, from definitions?
Thank you.
Do I need to repeat that?
Repeat it, because did you hear in the back?
Yeah, do I need to repeat?
Yes.
Townhouse development means a development of one or more structures containing a total of two or more units intended for owner occupancy, where ownership of the land beneath each unit runs with that unit, where units and the individually owned lands on which they rest do not meet conventional lot requirements for street frontage and yard sizes, and where walls between units are constructed in accordance with state building code requirements. All such projects shall conform to the density requirements of the district in which development is located and shall be approved in accordance with the provisions of Division Four of this article.
So that last sentence, all such projects shall, shall conform to the density requirements of the district in which it's developed, it's in which the development is located. So aren't we still circling back to that ten thousand square feet? Does anybody see that last sentence? Does that make sense?
I didn't see it, yes.
I, I see where it says that it's not in, that it, that it has the different yard sizes and such, but all such projects shall, shall conform to the density requirements of the district in which the development is located. So we're still talking about a maximum of four, correct? If we're talking about density? If we're looking at ten thousand square feet and we have to meet the density requirements, that's telling us how many can fit on a ten thousand square foot lot?
So, Kate, can, if you read right before that, in, in section eighteen oh thirty-five definitions, a planned unit development, which is what we have before you tonight, means a group of buildings of a single ladder track or structures on a site where the developer may reduce the size of individual lots. A PUD must be in accordance with divisions of eighteen, one, one, five, which are the other conditions we read earlier tonight of what we did. So it, we interpret that, that we have the flexibility for varying lot sizes when we're building townhouses, but not when we're building single family, one home on each lot.
And I agree with that, but I think there are limitations to it. I don't think you can make it as small as you want. I think that we're still dealing with the density requirements that we just talked about, all such projects shall conform to the density requirements of the district in which it's developed. So if we're saying that four are allowed on a ten thousand, I'm, I'm sorry, on an acre, it was four units on an acre, so within, within the R-ten district, correct? Or we're looking at fifty percent of what's allowed on the R-ten, which is five thousand square feet?
So, so you're suggesting that a townhome be five thousand square foot footprint? That, that doesn't make sense either, because if you had a, a townhome that was fifty foot wide, a hundred foot deep, they only own the land underneath the townhome. So it, it can't be implied that way, or there would be fifty by one hundred foot townhomes, which would be a five thousand square foot townhome, and that's, that's not practical.
I guess what I'm looking here is the words, and it says in no case, and it says density requirements, and so this is an issue that I'm bringing up as being a problem.
Okay, so how do you get around the statement before that that says a single track and structures on the single, the developer may reduce the size of the individual lots?
Which sentence are you at?
The, the one right?
Wait, which page? I'm flip flopping between twenty-six and thirty-four.
Twenty-six, I'm sorry.
The, the definition of what we have tonight, the planned unit development.
Right. Means a group of buildings on a single ladder tractor structure where the developer may reduce the size of the individual lots.
Okay, that's, that's what we have.
Right.
We're doing a planned unit development.
Correct.
And it says right there, we can reduce the size of the, of the lots.
Right. But it also says in the planned unit development section, that's on page thirty-four, but in no case shall the minimum lot size requirement be less than fifty percent of the minimum lot size requirement for the district.
Yeah, so, yeah, so read number E.
That's where I am.
The, the minimum lot requirements. A minimum lot size, lot width, yard setbacks may be reduced, except as specified in this subsection, but in no case the minimum lot requirement is less than fifty percent of the minimum lot requirements for the district.
Mm-hmm.
In addition, whenever the size of the lot is reduced, the equivalent area shall be provided as open space within the development. For example, a proposed nine thousand square foot lot would need an additional requirement of one thousand square foot. That's the example given, okay?
Right.
So if, if the lot was a thousand square feet, then nine thousand would need to be put in open space. If it was five thousand, five thousand would be put, they gave us the nine and one criteria.
Right. If, if it's that, but you're giving a one thousand, one thousand square foot, where this says in no case shall the minimum lot size requirement be less than fifty percent of the minimum lot requirement for the R-ten district.
But, so, but we're reading different places in the ordinance.
Correct. This is giving an example, if you have, if you have an R-ten and you're coming and saying, we'd like to make the residential lots nine thousand square feet and ten of the, instead of the ten thousand, you would have to say one thousand square feet is going to go to your open space.
Correct.
Right.
So if that would've said five thousand square feet and five thousand open space, that would've been the same.
Still allowable, because that's still fifty percent of the ten thousand. Correct.
So why, where do you get in here that it can't be less than the, the ten thousand square foot? What's, what's?
Because it says, I'm still looking in E, where it, the sentence starts but. So it's the minimum lot size width, and then it says, but in no case shall these minimum lot requirements be less than fifty percent of the minimum lot requirements for the district. The lot requirements for an R-ten district, which is what this entire property is, is ten thousand. Fifty percent of that is five thousand.
So, but the very next sentence after that, in no case, it could, the minimum can be less than that, it says in addition, whenever the size is reduced.
Reduced, down to five thousand.
I, I just, I don't interpret it that way, so I don't know where we're gonna go, I just don't interpret it that way.
Okay. So someone else can ask a question?
Okay, Louise. We'll come back to you, Louise.
Well, I was gonna ask, okay, is there curb and gutter throughout or just in the single family?
There, there is planned to be shoulder section, ditch, ditch sections, just like existing Birchwood, no curb and gutter in the single family, and there would be sidewalks and curb and gutter isolated in the other areas.
Um, approximate house size on the single family lot?
Yeah. Um, I'll, I'll let the owner answer that question.
Okay. Square footage?
Yeah. That's not my area.
Of course, I know y'all know me up front, but I am Robbie Davis on Turnkey Contractors with my son Jason, who's also sitting in the back, to state that I am a expert witness. Uh, I hold a, for the last forty years, I have been in the development business as well as the construction business. I hold a North Carolina unlimited and unclassified, uh, general contractor's license, which allows me to do any type of construction from a interstate and to a birdhouse, as the sheriff used one time, but we can build anything. I have been doing it for a very long time, and based on that, I am also the chairman of the North Carolina Building Code Council, so I'm involved in writing all building codes and hearing appeals on any codes throughout the state. But based on that, I would consider myself an expert witness in, in this type of construction.
Yes.
Accepted?
Yes, accepted.
Okay. All right, but to answer your question, which was simple, what is the size for single family homes? Uh, it is projected at this point in time, it is all market driven. We do not know exactly what each one of them will be, it depends on what needs are and what will be available. We do have a minimum of sixteen hundred square feet, which is what has been built recently out there. The houses that we have started range from sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred. We do intend to, as we get interior, to do larger homes if there is a market pull, and I would say larger homes would go up to twenty-two hundred square feet. And, and while I'm here, I'll just say the duplexes and the townhomes is just an overall plan of what we have worked with Mr. Stocks to do, to simply give us the maximum flexibility upfront for the approved plan where we will build townhomes, I'm not sure. Uh, it just depends on what the market desires. We have already had quite a bit of requests for senior living, which, uh, I have found to work very well. There are numerous ones over in Rocky Mount. Uh, I actually own one of the units with my mother-in-law that she lives in, known as the Pines, uh, which is there by Harris Teeter. Those are very, very popular. You put one up and it's, and, you know, when one becomes available, it is sold immediately. There are some also over on three oh one, uh, just, uh, south of the new bridge, and those are the towns, I think they're called, and they are a little bit larger. We would anticipate those duplexes to range, uh, to be put in, market driven, hopefully for a price range, started out around one thirty to one fifty now, that same one will probably sell between one sixty and one eighty, and then they will go up to two hundred thousand dollar range. The townhomes themselves, uh, we honestly, uh, again, do not know if we would build those, but we're trying to create the maximum flexibility, so if we get a lot of calls from seniors or what it may be that wish to live in a townhome, because, uh, we'll be getting new people in Nash County continuously, continually moving forward, as we've already found. Uh, Nash County is growing tremendously, uh, and quite frankly, uh, I'm amazed at what the growth has been and the number of lots that have been approved, uh, over the last six or eight months. This project in Nashville, uh, I think would be an excellent, uh, asset for the town of Nashville. We intend to make it very nice. One of the stipulations that Jason has insisted on, as well as myself, that it will all be owner occupied. We will write that in such a way, as tight as the laws will allow us to do. The Pines themselves over there have to be owner occupied. In fact, when my wife and I decided to buy that unit for mother-in-law, we had to put her on the deed as an owner to satisfy the requirements. And so far, that one has been there twenty years, and it has held up, and every unit is still owned and occupied by someone, and that's what our desire is here. I can't tell you what the laws will allow us to do moving forward, that's certainly intent. We do not intend to have any rental units, we do not intend to have developers or anyone to buy and use it as a rental unit. We'll do all we can to keep that from happening. But that's where we are as far as the size of the homes and what our intent is moving forward. We really, um, do single families for a while first, but we've already got a tremendous amount of calls for these duplexes, trying to hold the cost down, and, and some of you residents in Birchwood already, or the ones that are calling that need to downsize, but would like to stay in the area, and it would be probably targeted for senior living itself. But I'll be delighted to answer any questions, let's come on, move.
Thank you. Lynn?
Um, I'm interested in knowing any data you have, actual data related to traffic, particularly on the Club Drive entrance, um, and then explain to me, I think one of the comments made was that there would actually be five entrances, there's, there's gonna be the Birchwood, the fifty-eight on to Birchwood, and then there'll be coming in on Club Drive. Where do you get the additional entrances?
So there, there are two drives that go directly into this property, one off of Troon and the other's off of, um, the, the front, the, the roundabout area. Once you go through those two, you have opportunities to go left or right, and then you go out to fifty-eight through different ways, and that ends up being five total drives into the existing Birchwood community, and then two into this community. So as you go out, it's like tree branches, you, once you make one decision, you have an opportunity to go left or right at the next intersection, and then ultimately, there's five drives going to this corner of the world. Does that make sense?
I'm still not seeing five.
There's five.
Well, specifically then, um, you're talking about a total of three hundred, potential sixty units?
Okay, so I'll, I'll talk very generically about traffic. Um, the, a single family detached unit generates about ten trips a day. That's through the course of a, of a twenty-four hour day. The townhouse is a little less because there's not as many people living in them or kids or whatever. So the way that breaks down would be around three thousand, you know, plus minus thirty-five hundred, um, three thousand five hundred cars. What they, when you talk about traffic, you talk about the peak hour demand, which is the AM, there's more people in the AM, and there's more people in the PM than there is at one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock. So the peak, the AM peak is usually around seventy percent of, of one, of ten percent. The PM peak is around ten percent of the total. So that means there would be three hundred cars in a one hour time period in the PM. So I'm only gonna talk about the PM now, because that's the worst between the AM and the PM. Now, when you talk peak traffic, you're talking about cars coming and going. So you have your car that is coming home from work, you have the car that is going to the grocery store or to the soccer game, okay? So when you take that three hundred, and I'll just round it to three sixty, you take that and divide it by two, you got a hundred and eighty cars, basically half coming and half going. Some studies will say that it's around sixty percent leaving, excuse me, sixty percent coming and forty percent leaving. It actually switches once they come home, change clothes, and go out to eat dinner or whatever. So when you take that fifty percent number, you're talking about a hundred and eighty cars during the peak hour. You talk about the hour being sixty minutes, you're talking about three cars a minute at leaving or coming at any one given time at those two drives. So you could have three coming and three leaving, so you would be looking at one every twenty to thirty seconds at each intersection. Is that clear?
That's not a lot of time.
It's not a lot of cars.
Well, you, you said three hundred, three fifty, give or take, and you're allowing one car per unit, but in today's world, I think it's safe to say that there would be multiple vehicles.
When you look at the entry time generation, um, charge, it, it takes around, each residential unit generates around ten trips a day. So that means three thousand, um, three hundred lots, or in this case, three hundred and eighty, three, three thousand eight hundred, okay? Ten percent of those go within one hour, okay? That one hour is what we just, we just went through. So it does put at two intersections about three cars a minute for an hour.
But that doesn't take into consideration?
Um, I hear, I hear your numbers, Mike. Is there anything that you can give us to substantiate what you just said?
But they're, they're the, the entry, the, the, the government produced, yes, I can, I can provide that data for you, yes.
I see that.
I mean, there's, there's many ways to get it. One, that we could do a TIA, that it would be classified in that, or it can be, you know, that, that data can be done in a memo, um, you know, from our office or any traffic consultant's office.
Larry, your turn.
Will our water and sewer infrastructure support this, these mini houses?
Yes, sir.
As it stands right now?
Yes, sir, we have the flow and the capacity and the infrastructure for the additional three hundred and eighty-five homes, yes, sir.
As the lady said.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the levels, how many levels are we talking about for either, either the houses or the, uh, townhomes?
The, there would be nothing over two stories.
Nothing over two stories.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the ordinance allows up to thirty-five feet, but the, the homes definitely wouldn't be over two stories, and, uh, you know, ninety percent of the townhomes we do are two stories.
Two stories, okay.
You, two stories, maximum two stories.
Okay, maximum two stories.
Kate, back to you and your questions. Kate, back to you and your questions.
Okay. So in looking at the map, do you know the square footage of the open space and recreational areas in the specific spot? So I know you gave us the entire open space, but when I'm looking at this...
Yeah, I do not know, but I can probably estimate within a little bit.
So the open space of the dog park and playground area, what would you estimate that?
So what I'm going to say is if you look right above that, basically, there's four lots right above it.
Okay.
Yeah, those four lots are basically ten thousand square foot lots, so that's one acre. So I'm going to say that area is greater than one and a half acres, less than three.
Okay.
And it may be five, okay, because I didn't include the dog park and the mail kiosk in that area. I only talked about the area inside of that dash line.
The dog park.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the playground is outside of that, the shuffleboard, the horseshoe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I see proposed stormwater is right next to that horseshoe?
Yeah, and those are placeholders. It has not been determined. It will not be determined until topographical data and final design is done. There will be more than one, there will be multiple, and it will be sized to meet the state criteria, which is what the town enforces.
Okay, and so the other proposed one placeholder is the existing pond?
Yes, yes, all of them are placeholders, yes, ma'am.
And was there another one that I'm missing?
No, generally, all the water drains in that direction, so they're, they're on the low side of the property.
Okay. So in the PUD section, you know, the, the order in which these things are listed, I think, needs to be taken into account. So it says that for the PUD, the purpose is to provide, quote, desirable open space, tree cover, recreation areas, scenic vistas, and a variety of residential properties. So this is number two on my questions that I sent out into the ether. So in looking at this, it looks like the pond is likely going to be stormwater, but also it's inaccessible by anybody except for these duplex slash townhomes. It looks like much of the open space is basically lawns. It's undevelopable, little swaths of property, except for this first area of approximately two acres, which is the dog park, playground, shuffleboard. So I guess I'm confused as to why open space, tree cover, recreational areas, and scenic vistas was not like top priority here.
I don't, I don't know the intent of when they wrote the ordinance, if they were put in that order or the purposes of that. It was not, we did not look at it that way. Those were the required elements, and we made sure we had those elements.
So where is tree cover?
There, there are a lot of trees out there.
Right, I see, I see a lot of roads going through existing trees. Do we have a tree plan?
The, the town ordinance would be, there would be trees planted in the buffers around the perimeter and the fifty-foot we talked about earlier, and there would be additional trees for shading in the dog park and the common areas for that.
And is there preservation of existing trees that are large or substantial, according to our ordinance, that should be preserved?
I don't see any problem with preserving any tree that is, can be preserved.
Okay, so number seven on my list of questions.
Okay.
In section G, it states that a row of regular lots would be required unless they have an open space landscape buffer between the PUD lots and the subdivision. So I see that we have the reserved area that runs most of it, and then it cuts off where it looks like a development is occurring here. Do we have plans of putting a buffer here and here?
There's a buffer along all existing residence, residential units in Birchwood. There is not a buffer behind the houses that are being built.
That are currently being built, okay, that little cutout.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't see any specifics in here, because it's very particular in our ordinance as far as the tree placement, the shrub placement, and things that need to go in there.
Yeah, and there, at this level, there would not be, this map is, you know, like I say, one, two, you know, three hundred. That would be addressed in the construction drawings and the design through the technical review committee that the staff will go through.
For the townhome areas, I think generally we require that there be little pocket playgrounds in there. I don't see anything on this. I just see tiny little open space areas. Do we have any plans for pocket playgrounds in any of these townhome sections?
I do not know that it was considered at this stage. We will make sure the final plan shows pocket playgrounds.
Is this property one that requires an erosion and sedimentation control plan?
It, it, it will, yes, ma'am.
And that's something you will review?
It is, it is designed by us, it is submitted to the state, the state reviews and approves it. It's a submittal you make, they have thirty days to respond to it, they issue comments, you address the comments, and they have fifteen days. It's usually about a sixty to seventy-five day process.
And this is number twelve of my questions.
Mm-hmm.
In cluster developments, it says where it is adjacent to an existing noncluster subdivision that the setbacks cannot be reduced along the property line, and I wanted to know if the duplexes complied with that requirement?
This is not a cluster subdivision, it's a PUD, but this, it does meet the requirements of the PUD, which is the thirty-foot, which is not correct on the plan you have before you. It says twenty-five, but it would be a thirty-foot...
That should say thirty? Okay.
Which is, is also the answer to number seventeen.
And as far as the, this is number fourteen. The design and location of all of the stormwater runoff, the impact of it, the concentrated stormwater flow, and the, the preservation of vegetated areas, that's something that you are reviewing?
It will be designed during the construction design process. It has to meet the town criteria, which is the, the state criteria, and it would have to be approved to meet that criteria, yes, ma'am.
And the vegetative buffer required for this area, I know that you said that it's not being put where the new homes are being built, but that's still part of the watershed property. So is there, is there a requirement that there be vegetative buffer?
There, there's not a requirement for any vegetative buffer where you are abutting these houses that you're building. So if it's R-ten in existing Birchwood, and we're putting R-ten adjacent to it, you're not required to have the buffer.
Okay.
In this case, the developer chose to put the buffer behind all existing houses through there, except the ones that are under construction or recently constructed.
Okay, so I know that you said that you don't have the percentage of impervious surfaces here, but number sixteen, so my question was, since the southern portion of this property is located within the watershed overlay district, it makes it a requirement that the site plans show the boundary of the public water supply watershed, the location and the width of the buffer areas, the total amount of existing and proposed built-upon area and square feet, and the percentage of the site that is covered with impervious surface and proposed stormwater drainage facilities. So I know you said that was supposed to be part of the construction plan, but it seems like that is triggered to be part of what we see.
Yeah, so I'll just, staff wrote this comment, so let me read it. The plan is provided, is a schematic plan to show the intent of the development. There is a significant amount of construction plan work that must follow this approval and will, which is outlined in the requirements of the PUD, and will be reviewed by the technical review committee and the town staff. The built-upon area will be limited to thirty-six percent impervious as required by the watershed or a total of thirty-nine point six acres of the entire site. That is thirty-six percent. There are multiple existing ponds within the site that will be used for stormwater control, some additionals will be added, and it should meet that criteria, it says it should meet that criteria, it will meet that criteria or it will be changed.
Now, Sherri, is that your understanding that this can be something determined later, or is this part of something that needs to be seen at this point to approve any special use permit?
I believe that that is part of the construction plan, if that's not done right now.
Not done right now? Okay.
Yeah, there are a lot of issues with the street design profiles, curb radiuses, drainage, cross-sectional pipes, a lot of criteria has to be done later.
I'm sorry, unless you're making a condition?
Okay, thank you. Um...
Yeah, well, that, so the condition would be, we're going to approve it conditional you meet the town ordinance. Okay, well, okay, I'll accept that condition.
My last question, I didn't get to read through this here. Is there anything in here that discusses development around what used to be a golf course or a park?
Does not, no, ma'am.
Okay, and do we have any appraisal for any appraiser to come forward and talk about property values changing?
That, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Is that it, Kate?
For now.
Thank you. Louise?
You were talking about the townhouses and duplexes not being rented. How would that be controlled?
The HOA, you know, ultimately is in charge of everything, but it is in the town ordinance, correct, Sherri? So it is a, something the town could enforce within their ordinance. So those two mechanisms could, could police both of those.
So if you have a strong HOA, that should take care of it?
That would be ideal.
I was looking at the streets. What, how would the streets be, would they be paved asphalt or...
Yes, ma'am, every street's asphalt, yes, ma'am.
And would the town keep those streets up over time?
They would be public streets, and the, a hundred percent in the single-family detached streets, just like any other street in town. In the townhomes, it's, it could be either or. It could be the HOA maintained, or they could be public streets.
Several years ago, we had a development that I think they went into bankruptcy, and there were problems with the streets, and the town had to come in and repave to the tune of about forty-five thousand dollars. I just want to make sure we don't have that.
Yeah, I'm familiar with what you're referring to there. That was unfortunate, but what happened in that scenario was a bond expired for the completion of the streets, and then the development went bankrupt, and the town had to step in there. In this case, the streets would be finished before it was turned over to the town, or the bond would have to be enforced to pay for the street. If the ordinance does allow for the developer to post a bond, the town would just need to ensure that that bond did not expire, you know, to do, complete those improvements.
We just don't want to have to do that again.
No, it was not ideal.
Lou, do you have any more questions?
We talked a little bit about the open space. Who will own the open space?
The HOA.
So the park, everything related to that, it's all going to be a part of that subdivision exclusive only to those individuals who live there?
Yeah, every, every bit of common space within the development will be owned and maintained by the HOA. I don't know how the HOA is going to prevent people walking through it that don't live there. I don't know how that's done.
And in calculating the open, open space, you mentioned something earlier related to the townhomes, that the townhome itself is strictly the property that is sitting, it's just a piece of land that that unit sits on, and the surrounding area is open space. So that's included in the calculation of what you consider open space?
Yes, ma'am, that is how we interpret the town, the ordinance, the town, yes, ma'am.
Larry?
You answered my question about the infrastructure, and I was going to ask the question about the traffic, because I, in my, in, well, I'm not a professional in this, but me looking at the map, I just, I have a question about the, just the two interest egress, ingress come in and going out, just two locations, and I just, based on what your calculations are, you said that's enough, but I just, I just don't see it, but I guess we'll get deeper into that as we move along.
Yeah, I, again, I'll, I'll either, I'll deal with my own or later on this, but a TIA would, would clarify that. If it's the wishes of the board for a TIA to be done, it would show that it was adequate or it was inadequate, and what needed to be done to make it adequate.
How, how old is the TIA that you're referring to now?
Oh, no, no, it would have to be a new one. It would have to be...
Have to be a new one, okay.
It would have to be one for this development. They don't, you can't take a TIA over there and apply it, it's...
So it has not been one done for this development?
There has not been one done.
Okay, but we will get one.
If that's the wishes of the board...
It's my wish.
Well, it would have to be the wish of the whole board.
I understand.
But thank you so much. Is there anyone else, any other questions from the council? If not, thank you so much. And are there any other experts who have, would like to give testimony? If not, at this time, listen carefully. If the audience has questions you'd like to ask the expert, you may ask, but you can't respond any way to what he tells you. Do you understand? You cannot respond, you just ask the question. Dr. Street?
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Donald Street, I live 112 Golfer's Lane, and I'm also chairman of the town's tree board. And my issue deals with tree cover, which you brought up earlier, and Mike mentioned they try to save as many trees as they can. The map, the way it's laid out, has the streets going through the heavily forested part of the property. I'd like the council to consider a tree plan before we start cutting everything down and clear-cutting the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir?
Bill, 112 South Port Street, and I guess to Mike, but it's a question, the sidewalks, I saw the map, I thought it was all curb and go, and so it's not. So are the sidewalks going to be next to the road, or the sidewalk's going to be next, other side of the ditch, or how's that going to work with ditches? I don't understand that.
There will be a grade break between the sidewalk, they will not be adjacent to the road, they will be behind the ditch or on the backside of the ditch.
Any other questions? I guess you need to state your name and where you live, I'm sorry.
Danny Williams, 403 Golfer's Lane. I have to ask what the city's going to do about the foot traffic already in that neighborhood. I do a lot of running and walking in that neighborhood, and now you're going to add what your concern was with the traffic, and I still haven't figured out the five exit plan, but trying to figure out what all that traffic's going to do with the foot traffic going in that neighborhood right now. Is there a plan for the city? Because I have no sidewalks to walk on, and now you're in telling, and like we said too, about eight hundred more cars traveling up and down our roads.
I am sure that will be looked at, but thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
The mayor, is he referring to foot traffic that already exists through that area now from outside of the neighborhood?
No, I think he's saying with the addition of all these cars, if he doesn't have a sidewalk to walk on already...
Where is it going to walk?
Where is it going to walk?
Right.
Okay, got you.
I'm Erin Johnson, I live at 1202 Fairfield. I actually grew up on number eighteen when I was younger, and I have questions about environmental study. I don't know, have there, has there been an environmental study for, for soil and water contaminants?
Do you know about that, Mike?
There has not been environmental phase one done at all. It will need to be done. It will identify the streams to buffers, to wetlands, the ponds, the isolated areas that can and can't be filled or those that have to be protected, and it will, you know, require some permits to go through that process. It's part of the erosion, sediment erosion control that Kate mentioned earlier, or it can be connected to that, so that needs to be done.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is, I saw the plan for a dog park and some, I guess, entertainment-type areas. Are there plans for more public areas for the existing residents around Birchwood?
We're not proposing any type of entertainment area outside of the hundred and ten acres and the common spaces owned it for the residents that live in this community or in the planned unit development.
Excuse me, Mike, before you step away, just, I think I asked this already, but let me just confirm that that recreational open space area is for those individuals living within the planned unit development only. that that recreational open space area is for those individuals living within the planned unit development only. Is that true?
The, I cannot speak for what the future HOA board will allow for their common space areas. But when it is developed, the intent will be for the HOA to control their open space. And they can do with it as they wish. So I know that doesn't answer your question, but I can't answer the question, I don't know.
Any other questions?
I'm Jerry Calcutta, I live at 618 Goffers Lane. And I've got a question about the flow of the water. You're talking about putting in ditches, probably. That's our current, what we have currently out there. And some of the homeowners have filled in the ditches. And it's changing the flow of the water and causing erosion and different things like that. I don't know if the town's got an ordinance against that or not. But if that happens in this neighborhood, it's going to continue to do that. I know the town's got a water problem that's being looked at. But I know that's happened out at Birchwood. And it's changing the flow of the water. And it's causing me a problem personally at my home. And I'm wanting to know, you know, why they're not looking at curb and gutter or something to handle this water better.
Thank you.
The, the town ordinance allows for shoulder section streets and curb and gutter streets. Both were, will be evaluated during the construction phase process. As for the water that is running offsite, you cannot increase the flow of the downstream structures. So you will be required, we will be required, or the developer will be required, to put in the stormwater control measures to make sure that the downstream flow velocities are not erosive and do not, you know, cause, you know, adverse impacts downstream. It's through the review process, it's through the design. And it, it will have to be designed to make sure that is not done.
Are there any other questions?
My name is Heather Pierce, 806 Beach Street. Just wondering, how long do you foresee this project taking?
A lot of that is market driven, but it will probably be a minimum of three to five years. Ideally, no more than seven. But it's simply market driven.
Any other questions?
Ronnie Dickens, 104 Trun Court. Wondering where the access is going to approach, what part of Trun Court? It's a short street and a lot of traffic.
Thank you, Mike. Can I answer that?
So the access to Trun Court is being blown up right now by Randy. But it is at the very end of the cul-de-sac, at that location right there. And when, again, just, this is a, I don't know the street names, I probably should. But when you come off of Trun Court, that is one access into this development. When you get up to the intersection, now at Goffers Lane, you can turn right there and take the immediate left and be out on to 58. You can go straight there, take the next left and be on 58. Or go all the way to the railroad tracks and turn left and be on to 58. Those are three access points right there that serve that one access right there. That is three of the five. If you go to the other side of the project, when you go around the roundabout and you go out to Oak Level Road, you can be at the access at the L and L. Or you can turn right and go up, down, and turn left at the Nashwood, the Nash Rec Pool and go out to Clarrington and Oak Level. That is the fifth access. Those are the only five access that hit 58 and Oak Level of this entire area.
Any other questions?
Right here.
Okay, there's someone right over there?
I'm Kathy Morris, I live at 1204 Birchwood Court. And I know that it's been a golf course for years and years and years. And there's been a lot of chemicals put out there for years and years and years. I was just making sure that if they do have families who move in, if the soil will, would be safe for children to dig in it. And, you know, they eat it and wouldn't cause problems, you know, like.
Ma'am, could I get your name again, I'm sorry.
Kathy Morris.
Kathy Morris.
And you did say that they were going to do an environmental.
When that statement was made earlier, the environmental was the wetlands and the, that, it did not address fertilizer and golf courses. I don't have a comment on that, it's, it's a concern, but I don't.
That is something we need to make sure is done.
Great concern, yeah. Any other questions, yes?
My name is Nikki Rich, I live at 607 Goffers Lane. And with the increase of the amount of cars that will be coming in, we already have a, we already have a bad problem with people flying through the neighborhood, using the neighborhood as a cut through. How are you going to ensure safety for the existing houses that are there and the existing roads when the people who are coming into this new neighborhood are going to be using our existing roads of the neighborhood? How are you going to ensure that our safety? Because we do, a lot of people do walk and run and we have our kids and we go for, you know, bike rides and everything. How are you going to ensure that the people who are currently living in Birchwood are going to be safe with all this extra traffic?
I'm hesitating because I don't know that I have an answer on how an HOA or a developer or us as an engineer can enforce the safety of speeding cars in an existing neighborhood and people walking in the streets. I don't know. So with that, I don't have an answer.
I think that would probably end up having to be a town issue.
That would be one of all.
With speed limits and our police force and so forth and so on. Any other questions?
This is my last question, Heather Pierce, but I would ask the board to consider when they do the TIA. Since they're only looking at it as this planned unit development, almost separate and apart from the people that are living there now, if they will take into consideration the traffic pattern and all the people that currently live there. Because if they look at it just for this and they're using our existing street, I would just ask that they take the current homes into consideration for that traffic pattern.
So, I'll comment on that. The, yes, a TIA looks at the existing traffic, the proposed new traffic. It projects that out, it puts a percent growth on it. And it analyzes and distributes based on the existing cars plus the projected growth. So it does include that.
Thank you, is there anyone else?
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask before. A question about trash. In one of our local parks here, there's no trash cans, right? So for this, the common areas that are around Birchwood or the, the small playgrounds or whatever the cut-in places that you're talking about, would it be the responsibility of the town of Nashville to take care of the trash and pick up on those sites? Or would it be the responsibility of the HOA? I know the town's struggling with the existing parks. So how would they enforce trash pickup or cleanliness in this proposed area?
It will probably be a dual responsibility, you know, but I have a question for you, ma'am.
Yes.
Where are the no trash cans in a park?
Behind, the park behind Taco Bell. Stony Creek, is that what that's called?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next.
Madam Mayor, Wayne Sears, 604 Goffers Lane. There is Claridan Drive, Club Drive, Birchwood Drive, and Goffers Lane entering this neighborhood. I'd like to know where the fifth drive is.
So, as I stated earlier, if you come off of, I think, Goffers Lane and you turn left to go to 58, you mentioned that one.
That's Birchwood.
Birchwood. If you go straight at that, that intersection and take the next left, you go out to 58.
That's Goffers.
No. It's not. And then if you go all the way to the railroad tracks and turn left, that's the, that's the fifth one.
So I mean, told us fifth.
Thank you very much. Next.
Danny Williams again, I guess this is towards the town. Could y'all handle the influx of families coming in with medical facilities, restaurants, dining facilities? I know that each of, each end of Nashville is clustered because of all the fast foods. But does Nashville have a plan to implement these new families coming in in this new neighborhood of almost, approximately 400 houses? That can be ranging from two to five people.
We have a vision that will.
You have a vision?
We have a vision that will satisfy and we hope to be getting some things.
So would that be done within seven years?
I can't tell you that because I can't, you know, tell the restaurant people to come and buy the property. But I can tell you, we have interested people.
Okay, and then also you talked about supply and demand. So is my understanding, if we don't have anything bringing, like, jobs and everything like that and we've developed almost 400 homes, well, the demand is going to be ceased. So now the property value is going to go back down because there's no demand on the houses already here. So how would that not bring our property value down if we don't have any kind of infrastructure coming in to build up our community? I guess is the question.
I didn't get the last part of your question.
The last part of my question is, is if the town of Nashville has no plan to bring infrastructure in and we're bringing in 400 families, so the demand's going to deplete. And then property value should go down. Because you even said, price of housing is controlled by supply and demand.
But we.
I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out.
We, as a town, we have plans to make this a better neighborhood by providing the needs of the people. And we hope and pray we can do that in the future to meet the needs of all these developments. Because I tell you, I get a phone call once a week for people looking for homes in Nashville that want to move here from other places.
And Mayor, he mentioned, he mentioned infrastructure to bring, bring people in. You have to look out of Nashville's city limits for people that are coming to live in Nashville. There, you may look at Nashville and say, we don't have industrial growth at a rate that you would like to see. But look around Nash County altogether, those folks have to have somewhere to live also.
I agree, sir, I'm 30-year Navy, retiring this year. I bought my house in 16 because I'm from Nash County and I love Nashville. But I don't know if I love where Nashville's going. Because you've already lost the golf course, that was the reason I bought it there.
Okay, that's opinion, we cannot have that during this quasi judiciary hearing.
Okay, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Yes.
My name is Robby Gerganus, I live at 611 Goffers Lane. And I want a clarification on, on our 10 zoning code states that medium density residential is mostly single-family dwellings. Proposal they have has 190 single-family homes, 177 duplexes of townhomes. How is this considered mostly single-family home?
The definition of single-family can be attached or detached. So, single-family, a townhome's a single-family home. And that is referencing multifamily versus single-family. So you have single-family attached and single-family detached. And all houses out there are single-family.
Thank you.
Okay.
What?
He asked me to clarify it, so.
Does the building code clarify that it's what's considered a single-family dwelling? I think most people consider it a house on a piece of property, not a townhouse. If townhouse is multifamily, because there's six or eight people can be in that one building.
Multifamily is considered as more than one dwelling on a lot. When you have multiple units on a lot. For example, if you have maybe like, say, three or four duplexes on one tract of land, that's multifamily.
Versus a town.
Versus a townhome, which is on its own separate lot.
Each person owns its own unit.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, just, Mr. Davis asked me to clarify something. I stated that it may be seven years. His projections are more in the 10-year range. So he just wanted me to clarify that the seven year would be aggressive. So it's more seven to 10, not five to seven.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, well, where's the other?
They'll leave it up there, okay.
If not.
Do we have any questions from everyone who's watching outside?
Is there, are there people outside that might have questions?
Is there anybody outside? No, he says no.
No, okay. At this time, I'll, yes. Well, then you better.
Is there any, is there any plan to put a fence up to separate this? I know sometimes these separate communities will put high fences to count the rate between them and the other neighborhood. So I was just wondering if there's any plans to do that.
Can you state your name and address?
There's currently not a plan to put, to impound the 110 acres and put a fence around it.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
Hi, I'm Laura Body, 815 Birchwood Drive. I was a little confused with my notes, I, I had it go both ways. As far as for the, the, the single-family homes, this is the detached. I understood no curb and gutters, could I just get one clarification? Is there sidewalks going to be in that area? Or is it just going to be in, in the area for where the common, where the park is and duplexes? So everywhere?
Every street will have a sidewalk.
Okay, so my, my follow-up question with the town of Nashville is, has there, over the, the last few years, there has been improvement with sidewalks, actually, through the town of Nashville, which has been wonderful. It's actually allowed us to walk through town. You've seen people use that to go to our, our pop-up shops that are happening. And has that ever been a consideration? That may be a good compromise to connect these, these high-traffic areas that are coming into this development with all these people to encourage and keep us safe on those roads that do have the busy traffic? And go ahead and continue that sidewalk concept through these main streets as Birchwood and Goffers Lane?
Thank you, it is a great suggestion. Any other questions? I'll turn it over to the, well, okay.
William Morris, what's the definition of a single-family home?
Share.
Address.
What's your address for the record? What is your address?
1204 Birchwood Court, Nashville, 58th.
Sherri, do you have that?
Sing, well, actually, let me pull up so I can read it to you. Where's, how our municipal state's it. I'm almost there. Yeah, I got it, I got it. Dwelling, single-family means a building arranged or designed to be occupied by one family, the structure having only one dwelling unit. And then we also have dwelling, single-family semi-detached means a one-family dwelling attached to another one-family dwelling by a common vertical wall with each dwelling located on a separate lot.
So it doesn't really say what a family is, does it?
I'm sorry?
It doesn't say what a family is, does it? It's more about the building, right?
It's just a building.
Okay, okay, just wondering.
Thank you. Any other questions?
But it also, and I will add, it also says, have one for dwelling unit means a dwelling or that portion of a multiple dwelling used or designed as a residence for one family.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. Um, Sherri, do you have any last things you would like to say?
No, um, other than, I don't know what the, um, council's decision or what you want to do, if you're ready for a recommendation or.
Do I hear a recommendation from the, uh, council?
You hear a recommendation?
Sherri?
I can give mine.
Pardon?
I can give my recommendation.
Okay.
So I know we heard a lot of testimony, um, tonight from, from Mike Stocks. So according to what was submitted and according to the planned unit development regulations, staff recommends approval of special use 2021-02 with the condition that the uses meet the criteria set forth in sections eighteen dash one thirteen and its entirety, eighteen dash one fifteen and eighteen dash one sixteen for the following reasons. The subject property is plus or minus one hundred and ten acres and is sufficient size for the proposed development. The density of the proposed development is within the maximum four dwelling units per acre density allowance. The applicant is proposed in three point five dwelling units per acre with a total of three hundred and eighty-five, which he is, which the plan shows plus or minus three hundred and sixty-seven dwelling units. Planned units, developments, townhomes and duplexes are allowed in R-10 zoning district by special use permit with single family dwellings being allowed as a matter of our right. The proposed single family lots of the development would be in harmony with the existing and surrounding lots in the Birchwood community because they are the same thing. For example, single family lots and you have single family lots and dwellings. The proposed townhomes and duplexes will also be in harmony with the existence around the lots in the Birchwood community because they will be moderate density residential lots and dwellings too. And they are within the R-10 density limits. There are two interest points to and from the Birchwood community, uh, which, and they are Club Drive and Trune Drive. And the proposed single family lots, townhouse, townhouse and duplexes are in general conformity with the plan of development of the town. And just a few things I would like to add possibly as a condition that, um, one being that it complies with the thirty-foot, uh, vegetative landscape buffer as stated before, uh, meet that for properties located within the water supply watershed, as we heard testimony before, that it meets those regulations in note fifteen in section eighteen dash one one three. And just to add, so I have here quasi judicial requirements for voting for, you know, for the council. So the town council, upon making your motion on the approval or denial of SU 2021 dash zero two, if approved the board, if approved, the board need not make findings of fact. If denied, the board must vote on each specific finding and state a reason as to why the finding was denied. Only one finding must be denied to oppose the permit. The finding of fact are as follows. A, use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the, injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, but that the use is a public necessity. And D, location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the plan of the development for the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now I'd like to ask, what is the desire of the council?
Mayor, this is a lot of information to absorb. In my opinion, I would like to table this so that I can further review it, think on it, and make a determination of a later date.
Second. Okay. Uh, the motion has been made by, um, Kate in second. So all those in favor, let it be known by staying aye.
Aye.
Aye, this will be tabled and a decision will be made at our June first, um, council meeting. Any other comments from the council? Thank you so much for coming tonight and just for your kindness and your professionalism. And we thank you for the support of Nashville. This, uh, do I hear a motion that we enjoy?
Second.
Motion, uh, made and carried.